To order. I'll repeat that again, being nine oh one, I call the board of commissioners to order at this point. Levec, you want to call your group together, please?
Yeah, we call the cab to order, cab meeting to order.
All right, very good. All right, so we have three members of the board present, I believe it's four members of the C A B.
They're just waiting now as well, apologies though.
Okay, well, all right. I wait for Dave to come on. Okay, there he is, you're late, Dave, you know?
One minute.
We'll have to dock your pay.
Morning, everybody.
Okay.
Morning.
Let me read the code of conduct, the R M L D board commissioners recognize the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the chair on items on the official agenda. Once recognized by the chair, all persons addressing the board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. I don't believe we have any public comment. And so why don't we go right to the power supply? Greg, you're going to give us a setup and then we go to Bill?
Yep, yeah, so I think you guys saw my email last week, we obviously continually continuously work on the power supply. There's an emphasis on adding solar and wind to our portfolio, we've done a fair amount of wind over the past eight months. There's a couple more ones coming down the road. But the solar ones are, they've been more challenging to actually get completed. Bob just texted, he's joining here in a second, Colter. This particular one is an extension of what's called gravel pit three, actually it's gravel pit three and four. It is a project that had some challenges. Desri or D E Shaw is the developer, they are well established, we've done projects with them before. And I'll let Bill give a little more details of the project, but this is an extension that they were able to acquire some additional land adjacent to it. And so they're adding additional thirty megawatts to an existing field, it's about a hundred and twenty megawatts. And interesting to note, there's a variety, there's a group of M L Ps that are part of the project. And then actually fifty of that group is some of the I O U's, ever source and grid are part of the other group. So it's a pretty big project, so that's the background. I'll let, I'll let Bill give a little more details on it, it's something we've been working on, so. And it's part of an E and E, E and E has been organizing this one because they organized the gravel pit three. We originally thought that this was going to be an extension of gravel pit three, but all said and done, it ended up being right written as a totally separate contract gravel pit five. Bill, I'll turn it over to you for more details.
Okay, thanks Greg, so gravel pit five, this is the phase where we're seeking approval for today. It's located in East Windsor, Connecticut, so just north and east of Hartford. The supply is thirty megawatts, as Greg said, and this is in addition to a hundred and twenty megawatts that's under construction. Developed by D E Shaw, we expect it to be commissioned in twenty twenty five. And you know, our existing share of gravel pit three is sixty percent of the output. This is, we have approximately ten thousand megawatt hours in this gravel pit five offer. So when, it's about ten thousand megawatt hours per year, that's one percent of our expected load in twenty twenty five. So not a big share, we are taking twenty two percent of the project expansion output, so twenty two percent of the thirty megawatts. And the reason, you know, the, 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 the energy, the ten thousand megawatt hours is so low, it's just because of the lower capacity factors of, of solar plants. It is a long term contract, it goes for twenty five years, which is good. It'll, it'll, it'll fall off right when we're supposed to be completely net zero, so it will be good to have that bridge us to that point. It will generate class one certificates, which are renewable and non carbon, we will, you know, we will sell those certificates until we need them to comply with our, our compliance policy. So they'll, they'll help keep rates low until we need them in order to comply with the, with the internal policy. Policy thirty, the, the price is slightly higher than our twenty twenty five average, but the, the benefit is there's no escalation on the price, so it will become more and more affordable over the twenty five year term. We'll be paying the same price in year twenty four as we are in year one, so we feel like there's a benefit to that. Then I'll go to the next slide, the last slide. So there, just to show how it fits in with the overall portfolio, here we are, you know, in twenty twenty three, last year, you know, solar was one percent of our, of our portfolio, and that's basically from the three community solar installations we have in, 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 in our service territory. And as you can see, with, along with gravel pit three and gravel pit five, we'll, we will be up to eleven percent of solar in our twenty twenty six portfolio, you can see, they do contribute a significant amount over the course of time. You can see, if you haven't seen this chart before, this is the predicted load growth based on, you know, the, the electrification drivers in the territory. So we will need to meet this supply going forward, and that's why we're actively pursuing so many non carbon resources that, so we can begin to fill in the gap going out. Again, this is an important part of the, the overall strategy, and will help us meet the, the twenty fifty net zero goal and the intermediate twenty thirty and twenty forty steps. And with that, I'll see if there are any questions.
I'm sorry, just a quick question, Bill, is this chart reflecting current contracts or projections too?
Yeah, this is current contract, so we, we, we model in every contract that we have, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we, and our goal is to, is to obviously be strategic in how we're contracting for things, so when we do see things that are relatively good price, we, we try to lock them in over the long term, so we can, you know, we can, we can fill in the, the hash area here.
Yep.
Yeah, so Bill, question, so this will be effectively a hundred and fifty megawatt capacity project, right?
Well.
Yeah, so it's like one twenty, which will be done by twenty twenty four, and then thirty in twenty twenty five, is that correct?
The, the intent is to have the entire project built out, I think by twenty twenty five.
Yeah, so, so, so a hundred and fifty megawatts by twenty twenty five, out of that hundred and fifty megawatts, how much are we getting? Because you, you talked about fractions, but like, out of that hundred and fifty megawatts, how much are we getting?
So we have, so I have to do the math in my head, public math, I guess. The megawatts, right, sixteen percent of the fifty megawatts.
It's about fourteen megawatts net.
Fourteen megawatts.
So, so we're getting fourteen megawatts net out of that hundred and fifty megawatts?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's good, and, and, and this project is, like, you're saying E and E brought it to us, right? So I'm, I'm just curious, in the future, like, are brokers involved in deals like this, or is it all E and E? And, you know, do brokers take fees, so just want to understand, because if, if these deals are, if such opportunities are valuable, how are these deals brought to our attention?
Yeah, so Vivek, I can handle that one, so we typically don't work through brokers, we're pretty, as you know, we're pretty active in terms of uncovering opportunities. Some opportunities, and in parallel, E and E, part of their role and charter is to uncover and, and uncover opportunities, they're not a developer, obviously. This is one, so D E Shaw, Desri, they've been working with E and E for, I don't know, ten fifteen years, so this was another project that they were developing, so. So that's how E and E happened to be in this one.
Okay, so thank you, yeah.
No, we don't have any brokers yet.
Yeah, no, no, and so as a policy matter, we don't pay brokers fees, right?
We haven't yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to go to Marlena, and then we'll go to Pam after that, okay? So, Marlena, I believe you're up.
Bill.
Your hand, Vivek, okay?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so you said that we will generate Connecticut class one certificates, and if you could fine tune this part of the sentence for me, but we will sell them until we have to meet our requirements, I didn't quite get that.
Yeah. Sure, sure, understood, so our, our, our strategy is to, you know, we, the, the hard goal that we need to meet, the first hard goal we need to meet is in twenty thirty, and in twenty thirty, fifty percent of our portfolio needs to be, by law, needs to be non carbon. You know, obviously, by the chart, we're, 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 we're clearly beyond that. So we do have excess recs, we do it on need to retire them by twenty fifty, and then also, from, from now until twenty thirty, what the, the, the board has agreed to is that we will retire three percent more of our recs each year until we, you know, are at fifty percent in twenty fifty, so this year, in twenty twenty three, we are retiring twenty nine percent of all of our attributes. And then next year, we will go to thirty two percent, and the idea is each year, raise it by three percent. And what this does, it does two things, one, it helps us give us a ramp to compliance, and, you know, we, we could comply today if we wanted to. But by, by selling some of the recs, and particularly the, the more valuable recs, we're able to, to make that, because if we were to, to expose the rates to full compliance now, if we were to retire all the recs, we'd just have to increase rates, so this is our, our way of, you know, meeting our goal of being reliable, low cost and, and non carbon together, so that's the strategy going forward, is that we comply slowly and ramp up, so there's not a price shock.
And that's terrific, and I understand the strategy of having a formula of three percent a year that gets us to the, you have a whole plan, I get that, but we're kind of in a great position to go above and beyond the minimum, and we actually have, I think, some room to play with our rates, so I just wonder if there's any room for a strategy that lets us go beyond the minimum and not retire so many and only do the three percent, you know, to do better.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, understood, and, you know, the way I look at it is, by contracting with assets like this, we are enabling the, the energy transition, so just by contracting with them and getting them started. So I think it, you know, we're, we're providing an important service to the energy transition by doing that, so it's not like we're not doing anything, it's just that we're, we're just trying to make it you know, a little less painful to make the transition for everybody, but, but you may bring up a very good point, I think it's worth further discussion if the, if the board supports that.
I think what, what we'll do, commissioners and board members, is we'll, we'll, we'll make a note, you're right, we, the the net cost of power supply, which is a pass through, has been relatively low this year for a variety of reasons. And so we'll do a little of analysis to maybe accelerate our adoption, I know that Phil had brought this up, but last year that we probably should go back and revisit it, so I'll make a note that we, that we present something in terms of maybe accelerating that, that three percent, which is what I think you're saying, Marlena?
Yes.
Yep, so maybe we'll, we'll look at that, I think over the next couple of years, it might be easier, but we're lucky, you know, twenty six to twenty nine, we'll put together a proposal in terms of what would allow us to accelerate, so that's a great suggestion, and we'll probably do it realistically in the December meeting, if it can fit into November, we will, but realistically, we'll probably do it in December, if that sounds okay?
Yes.
All right, we go to Pam, and then we'll go to Bob after that, okay?
Morning, everyone, so you mentioned the, the rates are slightly higher than the current market rates, or the market rates that you expect in twenty twenty five. At what point do you expect that we will start to be paying less than market rate, and, and have you done a calculation on the kind of the net impact or savings impact in total from the fixed rate?
Yeah, it, it is, it is hard, we have not done the, you know, the sensitivity around what the inflation on the, the, you know, the overall energy markets will be, so basically, we're comparing it to, you know, our, our mixed portfolio, and of course, we have a lot of low cost nuclear in that portfolio, so it helps to offset some of the higher cost renewables. But, but, no, we, I can do that analysis, though, we'll, we'll take a look, and I think that probably fits in well with Marlena's request for a look at increasing the, our, you know, accelerating our compliance target. So I, I'll, I'll take that as an action to, to do some scenario modeling for different price scenarios.
If I, if I can add to that, just, so a year and a half ago, at a question Vivek had, we actually did some analysis of net cost in terms of retiring versus not retiring certificates, or, let me say differently, selling versus not selling certificates, if we don't sell them, we by definition are retiring them. So we'll probably update that analysis, but with Pam to answer your question, given that this is a fixed rate program and looking, you know, we're trying to update the cost of energy going forward. I'm gonna, you know, we'll do the analysis, but realistically, it's probably before twenty thirty when we cross over that point.
Okay, and, and do you have a sense of just when we start, how much higher, I'm just curious on what the, what is the fixed rate that we're versus what we expect the market rate to show in twenty five?
Maybe where, where, where that number is relative to the current portfolio?
Yeah.
So relative to the solar portfolio, it's probably ten percent higher, relative to the total contracted portfolio, it is about seventy percent higher. And as Bill mentioned, you know, one of the things, we've been around for a long time, so we have some long, long contracts, particularly on the nuclear side, which are in single digits. And so that, and then, so that tends to help bring the average down, our, our overall average, which is a public number, the total fully weighted is about ten cents a kilowatt hour, of which just over forty cents, a kilo, four tenths, so a hundred dollars a megawatt hour, or four cents a kilowatt hour, is the total full burden rate, just under that this year. And then of that energy is about just, you know, four point two percent, or four point two cents per kilowatt hour. The rest is capacity transmission and certificate retirements.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we go to Bob, I asked, if you answered, you know, the question, please lower your hand, Marlena, I believe your hand is still up. If you please lower it, thank you, we go to Bob, and then we go to Ken. Let me come back to Marlena, okay?
Thank you, Phil.
Dave, yeah, Dave, after Ken, Bobby.
Just a, just a quick point, I, I believe you, you, you guys do chase down deals when they come up. I know you guys execute on deals as they come in, so I, I do think we need to revisit using brokers, because you just don't know what's out there. You need to buy in to solar fields where they are. You don't always know everything, right, none of us do, so I think that in today's market, to get capacity out of a deal, to hunt for those deals and to know where they are, I think is something that, if we did have something in place that stopped us from using a broker, I, I believe we should not have that. Take those, you know, bumpers off and, and entertain that, I didn't, I realized we did not use a broker, I thought, you know, if we just.
We historically have not, we don't, there's no formal policy in place, but we historically have not, but I think, you know, as you, as you probably gathered, and have, having been with us on power supply for quite some time, solar projects are the hardest ones to get. And, you know, because, you know, there's a limited number in the hydros, and we moved on those, and we're in good shape. When, when does its own craziness, you know, depending on what happens with the offshore stuff, we're still pursuing, you know, we've got stuff in Maine, as you know, and we've got stuff in Massachusetts, we've got a portfolio of wind already, we got to keep adding to that. Solar is the more challenging one, we've got a lot of connections in the marketplace, we don't have a formal policy that says we can't use brokers, we just haven't, so I think, you know, we're pretty, so, you know, we haven't actually proactively gone after brokers, but, you know, we, people know that we're looking for solar, and we're actually both within territory and outside of territory, we're looking at actually developing projects, which we'll talk about more in, in the next several months.
And, and just one more comment, Phil, but I got, I have a hard stop at nine thirty, but I am in favor of this, so if there is a quorum, I, I, I don't think I'm needed for a quorum vote, but a favor of this contract.
Okay, very good, thank you, Bob, Ken, I believe you're up, okay?
Yeah, just a quick question, and I hope I didn't miss it when Pam was asking her question about how this cost compares to the portfolio, but how does it compare to your original contract with this supplier?
It is twenty four percent higher.
Okay, and, and how is that, what's the cause of that, or the reason for that increase, is that just market, or is it?
It's, it's access to panels specifically, they, they did a lot of cost reduction relative to, this is adjacent to the existing, same tie point, same connection. You know, a couple of years back, it's not cleared out yet, but panel, availability of panels has been a key issue, and in fact, it's caused several projects, bigger projects to cancel. So panel availability and panel cost is the primary driver, and of course, transmission gear, et cetera, but in a solar project, the panels are the biggest piece.
Yeah, other than the panel costs, you would think their, their marginal costs would be, would be less for this addition, given that it's, it's, you said it's adjacent to the existing construction?
Yes, sir, and same connection point, there are definitely incremental costs tied to them. Yeah, so we've, we've, through E and E, we pushed back pretty aggressively in terms of pricing, but that, that number is a good price in today's market.
Okay, was the original contract a fixed, fixed cost over the term?
I have to double check, that, that was, that's three years ago, I don't off the top of my head.
Okay.
I, I'm pretty sure it is, because solar ones tend to be, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, Ken.
Okay. And I was doing a little, I went on website to see a little bit about this project, saw that it's getting some community pushback too, to noise concerns from the site, that was something I was not aware was an issue with solar fields.
Yeah, so we, one of the things that you'll see in the motion is, you know, the environmental due diligence, noise would be a piece of that.
Okay. So this is not permitted yet?
It is permitted.
Okay.
This one is permitted.
So what's the purpose of the due diligence then?
We just, we have an internal policy to do our due diligence.
Okay, okay.
It tied primarily to the hydros, the hydros were a little bit more sensitive.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, go to Bob, go to Dave?
Yeah, hi all, thanks, thanks very much for bringing this forward. My question is, is, is a broader one, because I've always been curious, and it comes up again today. I know we, we sell recs, but I've never really under, fully understood what our process is for doing that, because the actual action of selling them is never anything that comes before the board, unless somebody correct me if I'm wrong. It just, we're told that it happens, but I would like to see, and if my colleagues agree, sort of a, an explanation, a written explanation of how this occurs, so we buy them for X amount, we hold them, then we decide to sell some or all of them. So how does that happen, how does it relate to the price we paid? And how, how is that market price set, who sets it, and, and in particular, who is buying the recs that we sell, so I don't think any of this ever really comes up, and I, perhaps more formally at the meeting on the twenty eighth, I believe. Wait, do we have a meeting on the twenty eighth, correct?
Yeah, we do.
You know, maybe, maybe we could render this into a motion to request, you know, a report, maybe with some history to it, on how this occurs, and what the, just the pieces that I laid out, what we paid, how they got sold, what they sold for, and, and what was the benchmark for the selling price?
Dave, I can, we'll, we'll lay that out in more detail, we are, we have historically been doing quarterly reports in terms of of the, the, the value and the magnitude of them. The actual price in terms of sale is driven by market, there's a, there's an active market. And then in terms of what the purchase prices are, those are tied to, so all of our certificates are tied to the contracts, so, like in this particular case, the price that we're paying for the energy and certificates is one total price.
Right.
So they don't, you know, we, we'll say, hey, today's, today's value of a class one certificate is thirty nine dollars. So if we wanted to, we could say, hey, the price of energy is X, but, but we, so two things, we own, we historically have only purchased certificates with energy, we've never purchased, we don't, I won't say ever, ever, but over the past three years, we've never purchased certificates outside, and if we did, we'd purchase them on the open market like anybody else would. So that, we'll give them a detail, but that's the big picture in terms of how we think about it, and then, you know, the biggest purchasers, there are some M L Ps that actually buy on the open market and retire. And there are, and then, but the majority of the volume of these certificates that get sold are go to the I O U's, because they've got a, they've got a different set of compliance obligations that they have to meet.
Meaning, a different meaning, they have a, they've historically had a tighter, much tighter set of requirements.
Historically, that, yeah, yeah, exactly right, much tighter historically, yep.
So you're saying other, other M L Ps have bought Reading Municipal Lights recs?
Indirectly, yes.
So which ones?
The ones that are, the ones that are labeled more green typically.
Okay, well, that would be just interesting to know more about.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And so, yeah.
Yep, perfect, yeah, we are, we, our, our, our strategies, you know, we is, is Bill, you know, on that, on that chart that Bill has up, almost all of those have certificates tied to them, not every contract, because early on, it wasn't a big deal, and some of those were rolling off, but but we're, we're in a very, you know, back to Marlena's question, and we'll put that together for December. We're in a unique position to be able to have a little more flexibility in terms of what we retire versus what we sell.
I understand, just a, just a very quick follow up, what I, what I've learned here is that when the, when the, we enter into the contracts, the rec versus the power is not disambiguated, it's one number, so the relevant thing would be when we sold the recs, what we sold them for, how that was done, and what, how that, how that was benchmarked, right, is that correct?
Yeah, and that, and the bench, I mean, we'll do it, but I'll, it'll be the same thing I'm going to tell you right now, it's what the market price is at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, and just, you know, class one certificate over the past two years, it's ranged anywhere from thirty three dollars to forty dollars. And whatever the quarter is, and what the volume is, just as a point of reference, but it's, it's set by, there's a, there's a big market out there trading recs. Certificates, we call them, not recs.
All right, the one last quick, quick follow up is, who, who is the determiner of market rate, as you say? Where, where does that number come from, is there a, you know?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a.
Interest rate equivalent of this is the Fed funds rate, or what is, what is the market rate of recs?
It's, it's like, it's like the wholesale part of, it's kind of like wholesale power, right, here's, so there's a, there's a couple of groups that publish, here's today's prices, and they're the ones that do most of the brokering and trading. So there's a, there's a group called Martex, we've been subscribing to them for, I don't know, ten years, that's our primary source, and then that's, that's basically how price is set, it's a public entity.
Okay.
We can share that with you too, that's, I mean, we have a subscription to it, and, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, it seems like this is part of power supply agreements that I know, when we enter into them, or when we're discussing them, it's an executive session, but once they're done, and, and once rec sales are done, I feel like that should be something that's part of the public record.
Yeah, and, and that's the quarterly reports we put out, so you're right, but yeah.
But more thoroughly, like, who, but yeah, okay, I'll, I'll leave it.
Yeah, I probably, we, we, we probably won't say who bought them, because we don't always know that, but we certainly, here's the volume, and here's the dollars that came in, because that, that's, we do, we do that quarterly, so, we'll be more clear, no problem.
Okay, let's go to Jason.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the Marlena's thing about being more, more aggressive on retiring. I do believe Reading has a couple of different options for people to opt in to buy, to have Reading buy more certificates and retire more certificates than what we're planning to do, or what our policy says we're going to do. And I, I feel like, right now, that would be a good thing to keep doing as opposed to forcing everybody to pay more, especially with the current economic situation with inflation and all that, and trying to keep the rates low, but also be environmentally conscious, I think is a good thing, and Reading does offer opportunities for people who want to spend more and retire more and be more environmentally conservative, they can do that, so I just want to point that out, that that option is already there, and Reading is already doing it. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Jason, yeah, that, our, our renewable choice program is, you know, we, we promote that whenever we can. And, and what we do with that, we, you know, people pay a, a little extra into their bill, and we use. and we use that that money to to offset the recs that we retire. So we can retire some additional recs with that that fund.
Right, and with today's, with the economic situation of today, we're not, where people's salaries are not necessarily keeping up with inflation. I think we should try to maintain that for now until things change a little bit, because there's a lot of different economic groups within our territory, and I think we ought to keep in mind that not everybody is able to do that. My my two cents.
Okay, Marlena, you're next.
Yeah, I appreciate all of, and agree with Jason's points. Just that I think, and this isn't really another conversation for another day, but that our M L D is uniquely positioned to do better than the competition of many other MLPs and IOUs are not in the unique position that we're in. And with regards to renewable choice, yes, I, we've been participating for, I think, over a year now at whatever the highest level was, but I think it's only about one percent participation of our ratepayers are in it. So, yes, all for the future to revisit, thank you, Jason.
Okay, George, you're up, you're up.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I also have to jump into another meeting. I didn't know if there was something that we were looking to make a motion on or something during this Zoom call. So I know a few other people have to have to move, so.
Yeah, so there are two motions that are on the agenda, one for the C A B, one for the Commission, after the C A B's motion. Just quickly, you know, for transparency purposes, can we explain why we had this meeting outside of our normal meeting schedule? Just so for transparency?
Yes. So at the end of the day, the contract came in earlier than we expected. And so they're trying to get all the paperwork done, so they can get panels ordered, et cetera. So it's an administrative issue between Desri, E and E, and then obviously, we are, we are the participant. The contract will be a direct contract, like everybody else's, with with Desri, Desri being D E Shaw. So it's a, it's a, the contract took a little bit longer to put together. And I shouldn't say that they're they accelerated it, they're trying to get panel orders done, so they've asked us to accelerate it, so that's why we're here, my apologies.
Okay, all right, very good. Are there any any further comments or questions? If not, I think the C A B motion is now in order. Vivek, do you have the motion there?
So, George, can you?
Do you want me to read it, you want me to read it?
Okay, please, yeah.
Okay, I'll read it. Move that the Citizen Advisory Board recommend that the Board of Commissioners vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to contract with D E Shaw for a portion of energy and attributes, including Class One certificates from a to-be-built thirty MW expansion to the currently contracted one twenty MW gravel pit three slash four solar project in Central Connecticut, including environmental due diligence.
I will make that motion as read.
Okay.
Okay, my second.
Okay, yep.
So roll call vote required.
Yeah, roll call vote required.
George Hooper, aye.
Ken Walter, aye.
Yeah, Dennis, okay, and then Vivek, you're aye?
Yeah, Vivek's on the aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you, so that motion carries four zero, I got that right, four zero?
Yeah, Jason dropped it, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, it should be five zero, Jason's here.
Five zero?
Five zero, sorry.
We got five there. Okay, the the Commission motion should be move that the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation, the State Advisory Board vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to contract D E Shaw for a portion of energy and attributes, including Class One certificates from a to-be-built thirty MW expansion to the currently contracted one twenty MW gravel pit four three slash four solar project in Central Connecticut, including environmental due diligence. Dave, you made that motion?
I did, yes, I made it, or I seconded it, you would like me to read that, or?
No, 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 I I read it, you just.
Consider that I read it, yep.
Dave made the motion.
And I I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so move the seconded, it's roll call vote, so I think we go seniority, I remember correctly, so Mr. Talbot?
Boy, I guess, I'll say aye.
Okay, Marlena?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Ms. Pacino, aye. Okay, and I believe Mr. Colta, let the record show that Mr. Colta had to get off the 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 call, and but he was in favor of the of the motion. Okay, all right. With that, I will, Vivek, I think we need to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
I move, I move that the Citizens Advisory Board adjourn to a motion to adjourn regular session.
Okay, yeah, I second, okay.
Okay, you got a roll call vote, Vivek?
Okay, yeah.
And Walter, aye.
George Hooper, aye.
Dennis Kelly, aye.
Jason Small, aye.
Vivek's on the aye.
Okay. Mr. Talbot moves that the Board of Commissioners adjourn regular session.
Yes, I did.
Seconded?
Second.
Seconded? We'll roll call vote again, Mr. Talbot?
Aye.
Marlena?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Aye, we are now adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.